We'll call the meeting to order. Anna indicated she'd be here, and here she comes. So we will... Anna, you don't even need to sit down.
Okay.
If you'll please stand and join us as we say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are all present and accounted for, except for Mr. Dalton, who's got a family medical issue. We wish his family well. One item or two items, actually, and we'll just add those to the back of the agenda as 14 and 15. The first one would be the resignation of our biz technology teacher. And the second one would be the posting and hire of that position. With those amendments, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Anna, second?
Second.
By Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, carry. We have no scheduled presenters, and I don't believe this to be our report day. But if anybody has anything for the cause, you can certainly put it in now. Moving on. Administrative reports, anything at all?
I don't think this is a report, Mom.
Just trying to finish hiring.
I'm sure you are, now you've got more on your plate.
Yep.
Public input. If anyone has anything they would like to throw out for the greater good of the district, this would be your opportunity to speak out to the board. Having heard nothing, we will move down to consideration to approve the finance report. Mr. Davis?
So, page forward in the agenda. And now we've gone and approved the preliminary budget for fiscal year '20. We've got it all plugged in for fiscal year '20 cash flow. So just kind of go through here. This gets us through August where we presented here. Sometimes the picture gets a little less clear as you get further out, but it's pretty tight. First thing to note on the top, there'd be the $3.3 million in the bank accounts. Again, merchant's account is essentially for bringing our HSA account through. Community resources, our main checking account. That's all of our payroll, monthly bills, and everything else that really flows through the district. One thing to note, on the left, the first number of revenue, the InverEnergy from the city. We get two payments from InverEnergy each calendar year. The $210,000 is set for the schools portion, and the InverEnergy that was... The city's portion has had a slight inflationary factor built into it. So this year's payment from InverEnergy through the city was $108,393. That has been received since this agenda went out. And that's been... That was the 12th of '20 payments that's set up. Further on down the road, you'll see the Goodview and Dakota County taxes. That's an estimate. That'll be the final cleanup of the first half of local tax collection. Lots of tech lease, bus lease payments go out in July, as well as debt service payments at the end of July, beginning of August. Those payments are interest only. As we pay... Your mortgage would be a monthly payment at your house. And in terms of school to our sets, payments are in interest in August and February, and the principal's payment in February. So I just have an idea of what's going out there. That's an interest-only payment at the end of July, beginning of August. And then finally, at the bottom, you'll see a bus lease payment. Just so we kind of understand with our budgeting for fiscal year '20 and with our five-year transportation plan, once we get into fiscal year '20, we'll be ordering two new buses as part of what's on that plan, too. And then we'll take a couple buses along the line here. After any questions on the financial report, I can do my best to answer what you have.
One more time on the InverEnergy monies. Where are we in that process?
So, basically, in lieu of tax, payment set up with a negotiation or a deal with InverEnergy to receive funds for the district set up for 20 years of payments. We have to do something on that to see when that finally ends, at the end of 20 years. If it's something that we have to renew through another negotiation or if they finalize their sort of tax-free part and they go back onto the regular tax rolls. So we're working with the county and with our lawyers that set up the first negotiations to kind of see where that plans at. I've got all the documents that are safe right now, so I'll take a look and see where we're going on that. But I'm keeping an eye on it because about $310,000 we plug into our budget for those funds. And we've already got earmarked the elementary roof for half of that, $158,000, give or take, each year to pay for the elementary roof lease. And the rest we're putting into our general fund to offset costs of, you know, could be teachers, severance, just day-to-day things, and all those in general fund. So it is something I'm going to keep an eye on because it is something that we do factor into our budget. Granted, the elementary roof lease will eventually be paid off, so that obligation will be... $150,000 we're going to find a hole or cover for, but it should be nice to have the whole $300,000 put back into our budget.
Would this be an appropriate time to talk about OPEB once more? I get a little nervous, we're getting toward the end.
Yep. Yep, so 10 years ago, and we're seeing a much revised budget. We're getting close to the end of having those funds. And we went out for a million-dollar OPEB bond to help offset some of the cost of retiree expenses. I can't see that far when I throw in my glasses.
I'm sorry, I can't get it to project. I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine. No, I can see who I'm talking to. They're just blurry faces, otherwise. Million-dollar bond. And retiree, there's implicit and explicit costs that go on with the retiree. And what that bond helped us do is pay for some of the retiree benefits. And we essentially took $100,000 each year to help offset those costs. So it's really set the time out where the benefit to the district of receiving $100,000 essentially, we're here that we're paying ourselves, paid off that debt at the same time. The good thing that happened with our last negotiation for teacher contracts, where we were able to sunset some of that benefit clause. And that allows us now through MDE and levy to levy for a portion of those retiree benefits. So it'll be offset that way. While it is a hit to the taxpayer, it does... In terms of the district, it helps us cover that hole where we were covering with that OPEB bond.
And keep in mind, some of the legislative steps you saw come through MSBA, they worked really hard at trying to get that we didn't have to do some of the sunset clauses and things like that. Like the district I'm moving to, they did not move forward with that action. So they've got one year left, and they're going to have to try to figure out now what they're going to do. That legislation did not make any ground. So very fortunate that the EA worked so hard with you to make sure that was in there. And I think, good... I mean, we're in a good place. We're in a really good place for employee retirement.
Any other questions for Josh?
Tim, can you project the agenda at all? My computer won't let me. Thank you.
If not, I would look for a motion to approve the report as full. Moved by Bill. Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. So please take a moment to take a look at all the things under the consent agenda. And when you're ready, we can approve. Is there any comment that you'd like to make?
No, we didn't... It's kind of summer, so things are a little bit slower. We do have a resignation that we will talk about as one of the items you added.
Sure. Moved by Bill to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. No, old business. Under new business, consideration to approve the fiscal year '19 final revised budget.
And we won't go through a whole lot here. There's this... Some of you have approved the revised budget a few years ago, three, four months ago. So this is just kind of tightening up where we're at and finishing out the fiscal year '19. Not going to be exactly perfect. We still have some odds and ends and loose ends to tie up as we get through the end of June. And then there's some final payments that we'll receive in July that are actually for the fiscal year '19. But I guess it's a little bit closer. Really, the big change in terms of an increase in the revenue and expenditure side on the general fund is the accounting of $155,000 from the state foundation. So we got that revenue in. We put that into the revenue budget as well as the expense. So it offsets itself. Where you see that revenue doesn't increase the whole $155,000 is because we also do a new... An updated what-if for a revenue projection model. And it kind of updates where we are. A little bit closer with ADMs and student count. And all of our revenue really is generated by the number of bodies we have in the school and student count. So there's a little bit of a drop-off from where we projected on the last revision to where it is now. You know, each child can go in between $7,000 and $9,000. So you're having a little lesser number for the ADM. You're going to see some... A lesser amount of revenue. A key part to look at when we do it, we're still coming out as a balanced budget for general fund, slightly ahead. Again, this is not going to be the end audit that we see in the audit, but as we projected out, it'd be... Still keep us happy about that 6.2% in our general fund. And as we've talked about, it's really on the very low end that we're looking for. But it is something that we have been managing and operating with for several years here. So not a whole lot of change in the general fund. Just kind of an update of where some numbers had evolved in that section. Food service, a slight decrease. And again, we get a little tighter with where we are with revenue. We've captured most of our revenue there, as well as the expense. I know we'll be talking later in, I think, in this one today, or maybe it's put off to July, but some of the potential costs in the food service area where it may have become under a facility item. Community service, this is one where we see a big decline in the fund balance in there. And a larger reason for it, and some of it we'll have to work out in whether it be Finance Committee or myself and Superintendent as we get further into it and really kind of separate and revise again all the fiscal year '20 as we're going ahead. We have preschool, teaching salaries are there on teachers' contract. So the salary and the benefit portion is a little bit different in this. The real... The big reason for the deficit spending in the community and really nothing that has to do with, you know... The numbers are pretty good in KIIT still and the end program thing. It's just the salary benefit part of it. So whether that's taking over some of the salaries in the general fund or maybe allocating it something differently. But that's a discussion for Finance Committee. Debt service really is set to handle itself through levy. And we submit our debt schedules to the state and county. And even though you see a deficit spend there, what is really set is you receive 105% of your levy because they assume that there will be some delinquent payment. And when you have a little bit of excess in that balance, the state reduces that levy amount. That helps the taxpayer. So even though there's a decrease in the debt service fund balance, we're still set to cover our obligations. Trust and Agency is a scholarship fund. Some of those are built on receiving either interest or they're a one-time gift. So you'll see, you know, deficit spend in the trust and agency as well. But again, that's set up. We don't pay anything out that we don't have funds to cover. And then the last two funds are ones that you'll see phased out at the end of fiscal year '20. And that's the OPEB trust, which we talked a little bit about, the million-dollar bond, help offset some retiree costs. And then the OPEB debt service to service the debt on that bond. There will be a balance of approximately about $17,000, $18,000 at the end of fiscal year '19 that we'll be able to use to offset some of the retiree expenses in fiscal year '20. And then there's obviously a solid debt service to finish on that. But then at the end of fiscal year '20, those funds will be wiped away from the school district and county. Just taken over something else. I'm sure that's what we do. So that's kind of the quick and dirty of it. If there's anything you have any specific questions on, I can certainly do my best to answer what you have.
How far are we on the path for the audit that you've been...
So if we've got it scheduled for fiscal year '19, there it will come in. Prelim audit will be two weeks into July. So it'll happen pretty quick. But as a prelim audit, they just come in and we kind of go through things in generic manner and make sure we're tied up in the right spots here. Now come in the first full week of August. Assuming everything goes well, I don't know that... You know, September board may be pushing a little bit, but it is a possibility, which would be as early as we've had it done in a long time.
We did purposely move it up. Last year, we ended up on the end of their schedule and made all of us very nervous that that just wasn't done. So we got in right away after that last meeting and got it moved up.
So we're, you know, I suppose in theory, the earliest you can start is July 1, but you've got a lot of stuff to tie up in fiscal year '18... Or sorry, '19 to get ready for that audit. So it really is about as early as we can get it.
But I'd rather have you tied up in August than in the past, it's been October. And to have your business manager basically off the grid for a few weeks is hard. So I think this benefits everybody.
Yeah, so we should have all the in-office stuff done. August 13 would be the last date for them to come in and clean out if there were a date to visit. If we go a couple of them, turn it on for the August board because that would, you know, you'd have to submit that within 10 days to get on that August board. But probably the September board is pretty realistic to have it done, which would be three months earlier than it was last time, so.
Other questions for Josh? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the final revised budget for fiscal year '19.
Make a motion to approve.
No, second. Katie on the motion. Bill on the second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the final '18-'19 calendar year to reflect 168 days.
Okay, this is just procedural. We've gone through how we made up our days. We did our bold days. Everything else we approved by the state. And once they say, yep, you did everything you needed to do, we need to bring it back to the board and modify your calendar. Just as you would if you were able to get all 174 days in, you would do that as well. So this is procedural, and my recommendation is to approve the correct calendar to report to MDE.
Make a motion to approve.
Brenda on the motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie.
What a year, huh?
Yeah, interesting. Starts with a tornado and ends with a lot of snow days.
Are we discussion?
Yeah.
Are we limited to five bold days? Because there's six listed here.
Yes, no, they changed some of the legislation. They were allowing people to go over that.
Okay.
When they came back and said, I'm going to forgive... You can have so many days. You can use them as bold days. Everyone started just creating more bold days because we knew that we could use that as a funding source versus having to have either kids come back or pay out staff or things like that. So most districts that had those in place, once they opened that up, we used the bold days.
Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor of the revision of the calendar to reflect 168 days for '18-'19? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy.
Okay, again, something very procedural. You've seen before it is a resolution. So if you're comfortable, go ahead and read that. It sets the dates that you have to be filed by. We will have an opening this fall for Mike's position. So that's why, again, that legislative piece where we tried really hard to get that removed, where once someone has been appointed, you know, just waiting because this will cost this district money to do that, and it's unfortunate. Again, that legislation did get through. Hopefully, next time it'll pick up some more ground so we don't have to pay for those things. I don't think the city has anything that they'll be sharing costs with us on. But it would be my recommendation to obviously get this resolution through.
Okay, we need a motion to approve before we read.
So moved.
Moved by Anna, seconded by Bill. Other discussion?
How about your... That main part? Just that first part?
Sure.
Okay. Resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252, State of Minnesota, as follows. The period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 252 shall begin on July 30, 2019, and shall close on August 13, 2019. An affidavit of candidacy must be filed in the Office of the School District Clerk and the $2 filing fee paid prior to 5:00 p.m. on August 13, 2019. The affidavit of candidacy must state that the person is filing to fill the vacancy and term expiring January 4, 2021.
And that would be the position that Mike is in.
Do you need the rest? Got that red? Okay. So we need to... So Brenda?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes. That passes by a five-zero. Kate, consideration to approve the resolution regarding board control of extracurricular activities.
This one was quite the conversation. And Jeff and I are super excited that we get to take this over as well in our districts. The resolution is there. It is something you need to do. It is something that you've already taken a lot of steps to do. There was a time even, would have been two, three years ago, we didn't have a very good handle on some of our extracurricular things. And it wasn't at any fault. It's just hard to reel in. And Josh can test this, too. And Robin does a lot of it for the high school. It's hard to reel in some youth athletics and things like that and of that nature. So this last legislative session, this came through as basically a bull. I mean, they were going to get this one through. So you really don't have a choice. You have to do this. It is a resolution, and you'll do a roll call. But I... Josh, do you see any way around it not having this? So it's procedural. You have to have it in place. And you do have to monitor your extracurricular groups now. Like I said, I think Tim and his office especially, they have so many, have done just a phenomenal job. And we've already taken steps to make sure that things that happen in some districts with money and things like that aren't happening. But now, as you... I'm sure you've read this already. It's outlined even more, and we have to take even more steps.
Make a motion.
Second.
What...
Brenda made the motion.
I have a question.
Yeah. Brenda made the motion. Anna made the second. Go.
So what student activities are included? Like even youth, like with like the youth force?
FFA? No.
Okay.
It's anything that has an activity account attached to it. So see if your youth athletics, that...
That's separate?
That portion of it would be separate. They are their own entity.
Okay.
But anything that has a student activity account, it could be FFA, it could be cheerleading. I mean, Jake, how many are there? Hundreds.
Yeah.
We have... Oh, it's a lot.
Seems like it.
It seems like 100. I'm sorry, exaggerating again. But there's quite a few. It didn't just be more procedural and very precise and what you have to do. If they have an activity account, they have to be monitored.
Yeah, the big difference for in terms of board equipment you're going to see is now you will see all the expenditures for the student activity accounts. You'll see what gets spent for boys' basketball as a student activity account or FFA to the student activity account.
Reporting. Like your monthly bills, like that you put through?
Kind of like when we added donations. You know, before, you didn't know who was donating.
Sure.
It is a visible thing. It can be kind of frustrating. I mean, you might say, why are they spending that on that? You really can't control that portion of it.
Right.
That the publicity and the transparency of it would be a long...
This is mostly fundraising money, usually.
Right.
So when they sell pizzas, that's... This is what they're spending their money on.
Sure.
We're a little bit ahead of the curve. There's a lot of schools that are using programs like Quicken or other programs, even just spreadsheets to keep track of their student activity accounts. We've been on smart finance with a student activity account and just crosswalked them out of board control. Now they'll be crosswalked so that they will report to the board. So you'll see OPEB funds go, but you'll see the Fund 30 student activity accounts come in to play.
Okay.
So you have ultimate control or say over how things are spent and received. Whereas now, you may not. If I have a tournament and I raise $1,500 for my program and then I spend it on pizza or whatever, you would not necessarily know that right now. And now you would. It'd be a report to the board.
This would be a line item when you raise money or not necessarily?
Better consent. I would assume is that's where most people are going to put it.
Yeah, you should have to, you know, you... Most of the fundraising that we do, you guys approve through your meetings. So anything that comes in generally is going to be already taken care of through board action on the...
So just be kind of like you have the bill...
You just can see the listing of bills.
And Jeff, when we were at Mesa,
didn't they kind of say that most people are going to attach it into a consent agenda? Some kind of a document of some kind?
That's what we do now.
You do? Okay. I think it would be easy to put it in there.
Smart finance is what we try to shift it off of. Or spreadsheet a couple years ago.
So basically, it's just trying to keep the whole thing transparent so that everybody kind of knows. So that just brings it more to the light of everybody rather than not knowing what's going on. Got it?
There's some regulations once you can spend that money on.
Okay. Okay.
And that's probably where it comes from, it's kind of a high profile one going on right now.
So if there's regulation on what they can spend it for, where's, where's the supervision in that piece then?
Currently or?
Currently and going forward.
We, if, if it's not approved by Tim, Jake, myself, we stop it.
Right, so that, that has to follow the check grade, check grading process.
Completely through the high school principal. So, um, Robin and I and Josh have worked a lot in the last few years to really tighten up control over that. And, um, we, there are lots of things that come through student activities that get denied because they're not appropriate expenditures for student activities, so.
And you don't want to impact the student.
We meet with advisors and coaches annually to go over, you know, these are the regulations that we have to follow for student activity accounts, and, and here are kind of the processes and procedures that we expect you as the ultimate end managers of those accounts to follow. Um, so we're making sure that we're following the proper fiscal management of that, so.
It's okay.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Sounds good. All right, resolution regarding board control of extracurricular activities. Whereas Minnesota Sessions Laws two thousand nineteen, first special session, chapter eleven, article one, section five, will require changes in the accounting for student activity funds and school boards must make change, charge, must take charge of and control all student activities of the public schools in the district, and that all money received or expended for extracurricular activities shall be recorded in the same manner as other revenues and expenditures of the district. Therefore be it resolved that the school board of Cannon Falls area schools, independent school district two five two, direct, directs the district's administration to implement the requirements of Minnesota Sessions Laws two thousand nineteen, first special session, chapter eleven, article one, section five. All right, let's start with you, Anna.
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda? Yes. Katie? Yes.
Okay, that passes by a five zero. Number five, consideration approved lease agreement for custodial equipment.
Yeah, I would encourage you to actually table this one tonight, um, I really want Dave to be here, I think it's important that when you're spending eleven thousand dollars and it's a lease of some kind, I would really like him to be here to explain that to you. Um, it's not urgent, I, he doesn't need it today, so it's up to you, if you feel strongly that you'd like to get this approved, but I think your head of departments should be here when you're spending that kind of money.
I would agree with that, yeah.
That's just a.
I just think, yeah.
Would someone make a motion to table this lease agreement?
I'll make a motion to table the lease agreement until.
Motion by Katie. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Anna to table this until an upcoming meeting when our director could be here. Any other discussion? All in favor of tabling this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is Carrie. Consideration to approve the fiscal year twenty property and work comp insurance renewal.
This is something you see every June, July, that time of year. Um, as you can see in here, I, it's pleasantly surprised that our rates did not go up a ton, does Tim have it up there for you?
Mm-hmm.
You know, this, um, this year I would have anticipated maybe a bigger jump, how about you, Tim? I mean.
Yeah, and I was gonna talk to both Jerry and Laurie, they've got something to do, just because of all the claims we did have, that that would not necessarily be an issue that doesn't reflect.
Yeah, I guess when you have a year of a lot of filing, you just assume that there's going to be a bigger jump, so I guess I was pleasantly surprised by the quote when it came in. Um, again, this isn't one of those things that you necessarily can approve or not approve, everybody has to have a workman's comp. Um, Josh, did you have anything you want to add to it?
Let's kind of go through real quick, the, on the right side of the prior data, the reason I put that up there, you'll see the quote, uh, for the hundred and six thousand dollars, the increase that you'll see, why that's different from the quote to the actual is, uh, when we purchase some new vehicles, whether it be a bus or vans, those, uh, insurance rates change. Uh, likewise, there's a work comp audit, usually after the fiscal year, and they go back to, uh, judge both claims and payroll, uh, salary and benefits to kind of figure out what we should have paid, uh, so really, that work comp, uh, quote is kind of a, a good estimate, but there's a, always a adjustment. Uh, so that's why the increase, uh, from the quote of fiscal year nineteen to the actual fiscal year nineteen. The kind of the interesting thing to note is, while we end up actually paying for fiscal year nineteen, uh, our quote is a little less than that, well, twenty-five hundred dollars less if you don't go with, uh, the added cyber coverage, and that's something that would be a new insurance coverage for this year, and it's been recommended by, uh, Jerry and Laurie just because of the amount of, uh, the increased amount of technology and potential for, um, you know, breach of, uh, what would be payable ACH, uh, our, uh, automatic payments that are going out or entered in our accounts in general, you see we've got three million dollars in our bank, if however we get, you know, locked into, it'd be nice to have, uh, additional insurance. We certainly are covered under the regular property insurance, but this was over and above to cover, uh, other cyber instances, so if you were to add that portion in, you're looking at a hundred and sixteen thousand, six twenty-six, um, for the total work comp and property insurance, which is just about seven hundred fifty dollars more than what we actually paid for fiscal year nineteen, so pretty, a very minimal increase, uh, from prior fiscal year.
And the training that both Jeff and I have received is you want that cyber insurance, um, that is well worth every penny. You hear about districts payroll getting kind of hijacked and things like that, uh, we have to have this insurance in place, so it would be my recommendation, I would assume Jeff's as well, um, to move forward with the cyber insurance as well, especially when it's really reasonable for what you're getting. So, it seems weird to have, be a world that we need that kind of thing, but.
That's what goes on.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You made a motion, Katie?
Yep.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Brenda. Again, this is to approve the twenty-ninth, the twenty-twenty work comp and property renewal, including the cyber with the Freeburg Agency.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion?
Are they going access chip, going across the, was the other?
Yep, so when we have, um, we've bid this out last year, uh, the qualifier was that, uh, with years two and three, provided that we were, um, good with our, uh, agent, uh, they have bid out to some other companies in the past, the rates came in, uh, pretty reasonable to what they were last year, and we were pretty comfortable with, uh, Freeburg Insurance, so they didn't quote out any other individual companies for the work comp of the property. Since cyber is new, they got quotes on, uh, several other ones for cyber insurance.
Which is important.
Uh, so that's the reasoning to be extra quotes for the cyber, but not for the property and work comp.
Okay. So when would it go back out to get?
So, you know, again, it'd be, as long as we're comfortable with them, again, they have one more year, that way if we were to say, if things were changed, we probably want to look in, uh, February, March, because it takes a while to put that big bid together, uh, to go out on a full one, but they have one more year left before we go out on that, as long as we're still satisfied with their services, which we've been very.
Very, very pleased.
Okay.
Especially with the number of claims we have to share. Very good.
So we have a motion, the second on the floor, to approve freebergs with the, uh, cyber insurance as well. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the K eight math curriculum for fiscal year twenty.
You do have board reps that are a member of this, but I think any direct questions you have, I'd probably should go towards the principals, um, but again, you do have board reps, it has been approved by the entire committee, uh, they spent an enormous amount of time, like they always do, on finding the right curriculum, uh, so my recommendation would be to approve what the committee has approved, because that's our process going through the committees, but if you have any specific questions, the principals are here. First questions.
So this is your, uh, this is yours, what do we have here?
Um, well, there is, the Pearson one, the second one is K five.
Okay.
Math curriculum. This process started about a year and a half ago, almost two years, with, um, Daniel Pearson. Narrowed that down, um, to our top three, we had reps from those three come in, it was pretty, it, it actually was like, I don't know, thirty-two teachers that voted for this to zero. So, yeah, so we currently have this program and went into it a little hesitant, actually quite a bit hesitant, and, um, they brought the wow factor and answered all of our tough questions and continue to as we deliberated, and, yeah, so we're excited. Um, what I like most about this is that we are getting a curriculum with the twenty-twenty copyright, and that is huge, so.
So the Pearson's K five and then the HMH is the six eight?
Correct. So, um, we brought in two reps, the current rep that we use, um, which is the Ron Larson series, Big Idea's Math, uh, that I think, um, I think National Geographic owns them now, um, and, and we brought in, um, Go Math Minnesota, so this is, you know, a program specifically designed around Minnesota standards. And, um, we had some really good conversations, because I think our, our math teachers are, are fairly happy with their current math series. The problem is that the new math series with Ron Larson, which is, um, the company that we did not choose to meet Minnesota standards, was going to, it was going to be two textbooks for grade level, and, um, that was a pretty big negative to, to the teaching staff right off the bat. Um, and then when we started looking at, um, the electronic features, um, the electronic presentations and the electronic recording, um, and some of the digital management of curriculum, um, the Go Math was just hands down a lot better deal. So, um, and so much so that in fact it's gonna allow us to drop, um, accelerated math, which is kind of an additional piece that we currently use, you know, in the middle school, so.
So do both of these include, the digital access, but they include textbook?
Correct, so every student will get a physical textbook, um, all the teachers will get, um, teacher manuals and the teacher materials, and then we have, um, with both of these, we have a six-year access to the digital curriculum also.
So they're like blended programs, yeah.
All right.
Anna, this is your committee.
I was in favor of the board's recommendation, or the committee's recommendation for both.
Okay.
I think one of the things we looked at was, there was a six-year online component, the other option was eight years?
Yeah, for the elementary version, it was a six or an eight year, they gave us two options, and we just kind of felt like eight years is too long to commit to any one series. Um, we'd rather have the flexibility that if we need to change, if the state changes standards in the meantime, that we've got, we're not locked into something for, for a long time, so, um, the original quote with the middle school curriculum was a seven year, and I asked them for a six-year, um, uh, digital subscription just to keep it similar between.
What was the, uh, acceptance for, for the middle school?
Well, there's a, a lot fewer teachers to deal with, since every teacher is not doing it, so my three teachers, um, were in favor of this one, so, um, Bucky's my eighth grade math teacher, and he really liked Ron Larson, because probably of the three grades, the Ron Larson Big Idea fit best with eighth grade, um, but when we started looking at all of the supplements that seventh grade had to add, which was a lot, and there was even more supplements that needed to be added for sixth grade to hit all of the standards in those grade levels, um, he was okay with making a change, so.
To make this work, K eight, and this is more for Jeff, because a lot of times we do K five, uh, the reason why we decided to go with eight is how we balanced out our technology budget and some of the reductions there, so they were able to get the K eight program, which I think is nice for continuity and all that, under the budget that we were looking for. Um, typically, we do high school one year and elementary the next and things like that. This year, it just made a lot of sense to get a program that worked for both buildings so well, and the teachers supported it, and then we were able to move some things around all that technology budget, so that's, I think, a good, a win.
We need a, uh, motion to approve, and that came from Bill.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion?
Are any of these your companies, Brenda? Do you have to abstain or anything? You're good.
Uh, did Carnegie Learning bid on anything?
Which one?
Carnegie Learning? Did they bid on that? No. And I don't have to abstain.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, any other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the nineteen twenty elementary student handbook.
Tim, please bring up the pictures, because Jeff, look at your face. Go down one.
No, no, we're right here.
No, there it is. Jennifer likes to go fancy.
I just like, I just like to say that, that Jeff supplied that picture, so.
With, with a caveat that nothing gets drawn on. Jennifer couldn't, couldn't commit to that.
So, um, both of them look really good, if there's any changes, Jennifer, you want to point out, but when I looked through it, I didn't see changes in your handbook.
No, there aren't any changes that I have as of yet.
So if we're approving this, you're not gonna get any changes, right?
No.
Who has questions on the handbook?
I think it looks good.
It's very easy for parents, it used to be so conversational, everything, we know now that policies don't need to all be in the handbooks, handbook should be a parent's tool to just grab something really quickly, and I think that's what both of these handbooks do now, so it's nice.
I agree.
Typically, you sit down at a meeting or two and just kind of review these page by page, or if?
Yeah, and I wanted to do it this time last year and didn't, so just to update it, really make it kind of streamlined and add, I would really like to put a little caveat at the bottom that I will buy someone dinner if they actually read this and see if any parents actually ever read it, but.
Usually in hindsight.
I understand.
Here's your first dinner.
Okay.
Okay, I would look for a motion to approve the nineteen twenty elementary student handbook.
So?
Moved by Anna.
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. Consideration to approve the nineteen twenty MSHS student handbook. Mr. Hodges?
Yeah, I, I did have changes. So, um, the change, it just, I hope I did that right for you, but changes are, are, are things to be deleted or, um, striped through, and then additions are in italics and in red, so if you've got any questions, if you had a chance to look at those, if you've got any questions, um, there's nothing really substantive in the changes, they're just kind of to bring us up to what we currently do with our processes and procedures. The one, um, thing that we're, we're constantly trying to figure out is this, how we recognize board scholars, so, um, we've tried a couple of different things to figure out how to recognize board scholars, and I think between Deb and Kirsten and I, we've kind of just come to the, thing is, we're gonna set a GPA cutoff and just say, anybody above that GPA cutoff, we're gonna recognize as board scholars, because like this, you know, it says we're supposed, we're gonna recognize five percent of, or the top five percent of our student body, and we, that would have been like four kids this year, and we had about seven that we really wanted to recognize, so, um, and they would have all met this if we had had a GPA cutoff, so as long as you're okay with that, um, that's the one major change from what we've done in the past. And then the only other thing is, I added a couple sections at the very end of the, of the, um, handbook about our ALs procedures for emergencies. And I need to change my pictures, because these are a few years old.
Not Jeff's.
But, no, that one's fresh.
That one, well, thirty years old.
Things that you've struck and didn't have read behind them are just redundant information?
Yeah, or things that we just, we don't do things that way anymore, for example, at the very beginning of it, um, under graduation requirements, there were some things that had, that for whatever reason, I just hadn't gotten taken out before, um, uh, you know, like here, we're not doing trimesters anymore at the middle school, we're doing, we're back to quarters now, so we struck those things, um, here we go. So the, the ACT plus writing is not required for graduation, the MCAs are not required for graduation, so, um, we, we're just taking those things out. And then what I typically do is, um, I ask staff if there's any handbook changes that they would like to see, and I start keeping a list of those things, and then hopefully I have somebody who's doing their administrative internship, like Steven Strauss was this year, and then I give that to them as a project for their internship, so that they've got a product that they can put in their portfolio, and that's a lot less editing that I have to do.
Can you go back to the board scholars section?
Sure.
I guess I'm kind of confused on why it, it was such an issue for you at graduation if it's just in the handbook and it's not really policy?
Well, you know, we haven't had anybody ever question, um, why one student is there or not, uh, and gets that recognition or not, but we just want to try to make sure that we're justifying why we make the decisions that we do, and what was there currently, let, let, it's kind of loosey-goosey, it said five percent plus the, um, there was some discretion of the administration to make some additional changes there, and I'd rather have it just be kind of a black and white thing, just say, you know, if you get to this cut point, everybody above that will be recognized. Um, I don't think we necessarily have to worry about percentages, I mean, we, we try to, we try to just have everybody learn at a high level, and if that means that, you know, twenty percent of our students make that GPA cut line, that's, that's, that's an awesome thing, yeah.
The alternative could also happen.
Right.
Yep.
Right. And so.
But you still left on the discretion.
Yep, the, the discretion piece is still in there too, so.
Mm-hmm.
But the rate we're going right now, we're not gonna have to worry about having not many kids at three point, what was it, three point nine five zero?
Three point nine five.
And we had, we had six solid ones there, um, this year, so.
Yeah. I guess that's, that's kind of where I was wondering, should we have just kind of taken that step, you know, because these kids really work hard and, you know, because it is just five percent?
Yeah, so.
There's some wiggle room when you have the discretion.
I think when we, I think when we first, um, when I first came, it said top five, so we took the top five GPAs, um, and that one, again, we got to the point where it's like, wow, we've got this great group of kids and we want to recognize eight kids, um, you know, what's a way that we can just put it out there and not have to have anybody need to worry about whether it's at my discretion or not? Um, it's not, I don't have a problem making those decisions, but I'd rather just have it clear to everybody right off the bat, that if this is something that you're shooting for, this is where you gotta be.
Okay, I would look for a motion to approve the handbook.
Oh, motion.
Motion by Brenda. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Okay, everyone who wants to approve the middle school, high school handbook, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the nineteen twenty Minnesota MSBA membership.
This is your organization, you should belong, um, added benefits are policy and those updates that Lori and I get, Jeff would get, um, I think everyone in the room basically benefits from, so it would be my recommendation for you to continue your membership with MSBA. You also get legal advice from them at no cost, and I think that's worth that a lot.
Okay, motion to approve. Motion by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor of approving the nineteen twenty MSBA memberships, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve Sarah Olson and Jerry Geik into the Ed Foundation Board.
Yes, Brenda and I are both on that committee, and every time they have new members join, they like you to approve them, uh, Sarah and Jerry, uh, Jerry, if you remember correctly, has been on for many, many years, coming back, kind of helping us, um, with some of her past experience, and Sarah is just a wealth of knowledge and a good person to have And Sarah is just a wealth of knowledge and a good person to have on the board as well. So I believe Brenda and I both would strongly recommend approving both of these ladies for the Ed Foundation Board.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Brenda, seconded by Katie. All in favor of the approval of these women, say aye.
Aye.
I think I have to abstain.
Yeah, you probably do, yeah. That's okay.
That's all right.
Is that your?
Four zero with extension from Hannah.
Cousin-in-law.
Yeah. Is that four degrees?
Removed.
Number twelve, recognition of, recognition of tenure. Sam McCamey, Adam Nelson, Morgan Schwartz, Katie Nye, Mary Wirtjes.
Well, just a beautiful list of amazing educators. Um, you know, this is just amazing that they're even teaching in our district. So it would be my recommendation, you know, to continue to keep growing your teacher program and getting great teachers here. There's nothing you need to do for action, but, um, we do want to recognize the people that have earned their tenure in our district.
Okay, number thirteen, discussion of Cannon Valley Senior Center. This has been going on for a while?
Yeah, we, um, we have a new agreement in front of us. Just to kind of as a recap, you know, we had met and tried to move forward five hundred dollars a month. I think we had a great meeting, um, with the city and the school and everyone involved, and, um, they showed us kind of their financials and how, you know, you know, they're, they're in dire need as well. So we came back with a three hundred, um, and the board had approved that. We brought it back. Jake and I met with them, bringing this agreement back to them, and they said they'd have to bring it to their board. Unfortunately, three hundred wasn't approved. Um, they feel now that they can pay two hundred and fifty dollars a month. This did, this contract did start January first, um, and you all have a, I don't know if you still have your old copy with you or if you need to look at this again. Nothing else has changed except the dollar amount. It is completely up to you. This is a discussion item. You have to give Jake and I some direction on where to go with this. Soon to be Jeff, if you decide to table it tonight, want to meet with them again. Two fifty gives you three thousand dollars for the year. About the expenses of the, again, is around eighteen to nineteen thousand dollars, and you remember, we went through all of that. We do share it with the School of Dance. They pay. The Historical Society was down there, did donations. Our own dance program is down there, and some really exciting news is Jake's program continues to grow through CFE.
ECE.
Yes. Our Monroe's program, and we're just super excited that we were able to move one of their programs down. We did move the senior center out of one of the rooms, um, and they, no problem with them at all. They were just wonderful about it. Because they're really supposed to be like in one room, but, you know, when the rooms are open, it makes sense to have them used and things like that. So Jake's got a program down there now. Um, you run a ton of community ed things, taekwondo and, and the gym is being used and all of that. So that's what's on the table. This will be yours, not mine, so I really want it to be you and what you decide to do. So that's where we're at. The offer, the counter offer on the table is two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
What's the, the date on the contract?
The contract is January first through July, June thirtieth of this month. And then it's, it's an honorary for a year, but we're, we're at that now. I mean, this is, this is.
So this January through July is retroactive?
Like, yep. We're trying, we're just trying to get the contract that was in place correct, Jake.
Yep.
I mean, we're so far behind now, and we're trying to get this done, and then you guys will, you'll move forward, see what they want to do for the next year.
So that, um, the cost of the eighteen thousand, is that for like everything in the building, or is that just for the senior center?
But you, we have, you know, it, it's broken down. I mean, most of it would be the senior center, but we do have activities down there and.
How much are they bringing in?
You know, just for kicks pays rent, um, other, but you do have your dance team down there. They don't pay anything, obviously. Basketball's going to be in the gym in the winter. Volleyball's going to be in the gym in the winter, so there's not a lot, there's not a lot of groups that pay rent down there. Some, you know, significant rent. Just for kicks is probably the biggest one.
And the dance, they, they, we get a check from them. School of Dance pays everyone.
Like, how much does that offset the?
Or they pay a hundred dollars a month.
Okay.
Twelve hundred dollars.
Both your students or just School of Dance?
School of Dance.
What about just for kicks?
I'd have to look it up. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
Well, they're using half as much space now, so. They should pay half as much, right? I think they had countered with two fifty before.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that was.
I thought we were going.
I thought they turned down the two fifty.
Well, they didn't, but I thought the number that we agreed to at the board level was two fifty to go back retroactively.
That's what I thought too.
Not three hundred.
Okay, our minutes that Lori showed us was three hundred. I don't.
Yeah, I don't know.
And then, and then this will be easy then. If you've already feel good about the two fifty, we can, we'll do that.
I, I'm not sure about the retro, though. I, I, I understand, um, that the senior center, since senior center has some financial issues, and, um, that was brought to our attention at that meeting. There was probably fifteen people in that meeting. And, uh, it's been a struggle for them, and, uh, while I might have been, uh, in January thinking, you know, they need to pay this. I think it's a stretch for them to pay this, and, uh, you know, we want people in there. We want people using it. I, I fully support two hundred and fifty dollars, and I'd like us to consider starting it from now.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, July, right?
No retro.
I'd be good with that, too.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's been a lot of discussion around this, around town, you know, like comments around it. I think the big picture is, yes, the school district does have a big expense for that building. Is that really the thing that we want to keep? And that, that really becomes the question. Is it a building that the district needs to keep up? So if we're getting something back in return along with our organizations using it, are we in the red? Or not? That's really where it comes down to, because the dollars that we're spending, the eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars, should be going for the kids. And so then that's where I'm kind of, where is that number?
There's, there's so many other factors that fall into it, you know, just owning that building and the age of the building certainly helps our equalization aid and some of the, those types of things. I mean, when we had to wait for receipt of, they had a certain age, and we had to wait for the elementary to get a certain age and all of those things to happen. So there is some benefit to owning the building.
Oh, exactly, and I think that's part, that needs to be part of the discussion and understanding throughout the community. And so, yeah, we are spending eighteen, nineteen, and it is a negative, really. But there is that benefit in the bigger picture. So the senior center itself really kind of took it as a stab in the back. How I viewed it is that all of a sudden we're dumping it on them as paying rent, and they went from one room to multiple rooms. And there was the articles in the newspaper about where it started, how it started, and some of it's probably very accurate because you had board members remembering what happened. But I really feel that there should be something paid in what that number is. I don't think we're there yet. I was against going retroactive before. I think, um, agreeing to terms before and not putting something on top of them that's going to kill their budget even worse, didn't make any sense to me, so. I think if they're comfortable with two fifty, I'm kind of with Bob moving forward.
Start with July to July.
I mean, but do we have some sort of resolution from that meeting that two fifty is a number that they can handle?
The email that I, and I quoted to Jeff, but Jake and I received, and they, they said in there, two fifty was the amount.
I'm in agreement with you. I think that there just needs to be some boundaries as far as how many rooms that they're given and how many they take up. So that we can bring in more community programs if we could, um, to try and buffer that, that amount that we're having to, to pay out. But I would like to see them stay, and, and I would be okay with the no retro pay. I think especially after seeing their budget, and just seeing how they run thing, have, are running things and, and how much they do for our seniors. I think that it's important, it's such an important program to have. But I agree with you, like, I, I would feel, I would feel bad on top of their budget the way it is to be asking for a retro, so.
So we could just have Jake redo this contract, and then actually Jeff's name could be put in here, and then, you know, work with Teresa, um, this next week, and get a, you know, a year, and then maybe you can assess where they're at and where we're at and all of that. The biggest change that occurred during my tenure here was, um, and Dick's back there, he can probably help us with memory here. Twyla was a part of the, Twyla was a part of the volunteer program, and we had so many volunteers coming up. And when Twyla retired, some of that just kind of stopped, um, happening as much. And I think that's when we, we maybe noticed it a little more. And I, I really think they're committed to building that up again and helping us out with some volunteers and things, so I think it'll be good.
Not an action item.
Do we need a motion to revise the contract, or can we vote on that after?
I think you, you can revise it if you want, or you can just have.
Maybe just send it back to committee?
Sure.
That sounds good. And Jake, you can change it up and then put Jeff's name in there, and I don't think that'll be hard.
Sometimes it's difficult to see your entity in, in the newspaper taking hits for something like this senior center, and, you know, I think it's important for people to know that we're the, we're the largest financial supporters of this, of the Shepherd Center in the community by far. And I think people need to understand and see that, that it's not a small task for us, because whenever you take money out of one pocket, you put it into another one, that's going to be some, some suffering somewhere, so, um, but we want them there. Everybody's acknowledged that, I think, so. So we don't need to do anything more than that, except send it through committee for a, for a final of seats. Okay, number fourteen, resignation of a biz tech teacher.
Yes, we would like to thank, uh, Matt Junker for his years of service, um, at high school. He is moving on to Prior Lake. Can hardly hold it against him. It's close to his hometown, and, um, with young kids and driving in the winter and all of those things. I know he enjoyed his time very much here. He came in today to talk to us and, and let us know that, um, he really would have loved to stay here, but it's, that's a lot of driving in the winter, and with younger kids, it was tough, so. We wish him the best of luck and thank you for his service.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve the resignation. Moved by Bill, second?
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion?
I wondered why it wasn't at the golf course.
How do you know?
All in favor of the approval of the resignation of Matt Junker, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Next would be the post and hire for the biz technology position.
Okay, this one gets a little technical, but because we don't meet again to the end of July, I want to have it on here so that we can move forward. We do have a teacher currently on unrequested leave of absence, and if you understand the contract, what happens is anytime a position opens that they are licensed for, they have the rights to that job first. I have been in contact with this teacher today, but we don't have anything signed or anything like that. She does have a business degree but never used it before. And, um, I believe after our conversation that she will hold off and not do that. What that means for her is that she loses her bumping rights to come back to Cannon Falls. We hope that she applies if a Spanish position or anything like that was to open. We hope that she does apply because she's a remarkable teacher. But it will be a choice that she has to make. If she declines the open position that she's qualified for, I will draft a letter, um, hopefully before Jeff gets on, we'll get this done this week, so you don't have to walk into that. But just make sure we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's and all of that, and make sure that the right documentation, because this doesn't happen very often where a position opens and they're declining it. So if all of that happens, um, I would like permission to go ahead and post externally, and, and this is a tough time of year. I mean, like Tim said, he's doing a lot of hiring. I want to get him going. Internally, we've already moved ahead because I, I need to get that five days out there. We obviously need this position to be filled. So there's a little bit of a hiccup, but I think, uh, we'll know the answer to that by tomorrow. I'll draft that paperwork, and then I would like permission to post externally if we don't have a teacher. Does that make sense, or is that?
Yep.
If you understand the contract, it gets, it's.
So should the motion be relative to that, though?
No, I did check with that today. I did. I asked how that should be verded when I called MSBA, and they said, no, all your board needs to do is approve if you're post and hiring, like you always do. If that teacher accepts it for some reason, um, that's just contractual. That null and voids that anyway. I did ask that question because I said the same thing. I'm like, how do I, how do I word this? And they said, that's contractual, always trumps, you're just making sure we're ready to go before the end of July, so we don't have to call a special board meeting. But if she gives me the word that she does want to move ahead with it, Tim will move ahead with that, and I will send you an email, and you know that as well. I think we're covered by doing it this way. I just wanted you aware, so it's not like a surprise.
You can approve. Do you approve?
Motion by Bill, seconded by Katie.
Sure. I second.
I thought you mumbled. That's good enough for me. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Look at the busy meeting we've already got for July. You can see everything that's on here we'll be dealing with and anything else that may come up. Just a side note, we, we were, as part of the superintendent hire process, we do have an opportunity to use the MSBA services to hold a workshop under their auspices as, as part of our contractual agreement with them. I did send you out something, uh, with three dates at our, uh, at our negotiations. We just had some idle conversation whether or not we wanted to include MSBA. It does lock us into one of three dates. Or do we just want to do it in-house, so to speak, and just take care of it ourselves? Linda, what's your?
Oh, I thought that since it was part of the package agreement with MSBA that we might benefit from having them there if those dates work out, if we can't work, if they don't work out, then we can do it on our own.
If you haven't sent me what dates you're eligible for, maybe just kick them over to me and, uh, at some point in time, and we'll see if they all match. We've got four different dates on there.
Well, the August date was out, so that was.
September tenth was one, and then there was a July.
There was a July. Truly hard to all get together.
Yeah, I think I could do it.
And they were both Tuesday nights, July thirtieth and September tenth, Tuesday nights.
You want to venture and, and, uh, lock in a date, or do you just want to?
The dates are July thirtieth, August twenty-sixth, and September tenth.
There's a September.
I feel like that's going to be tough, though, that's like.
The beginning of school.
There's going to be a lot of stuff going on.
In September?
Yeah.
Wouldn't there be a second?
We'll have soccer. Still, there's just. We'll have soccer.
I like the idea. I just saw the dates and I'm thinking, okay, I know I've gone for probably two of them, the September one, but probably one possibility for them, so. And so.
July thirtieth seems too soon.
But I can, I can see the point. We're, we're rushing into school year and such, too, so.
And these are the only dates that they're offering to us? We can't go back and say, we can't find, these dates don't work?
We can certainly ask.
I think that might be worthwhile.
What do you think about the time sequence? What happens if they say we don't have another date open until October? Good.
That would be fine. I think October would be better than September for me.
Okay, let's go fishing and see what we find from them.
Yeah, I, I guess I would like to see us do something on our own also. I think, uh, it's a good opportunity with Jeff coming on board to spend some time, um, a little more casually versus kind of having, uh, some structure that I'm sure they're going to have too.
Certainly the one thing about MSBA is we don't know what, where we're going with them unless they set an agenda. Right. We have our own meeting. We know exactly what we want, so. Okay, we'll, uh, we'll just see if they have.
I hear you, the touchy-feely stuff, too.
So anything else that you need to add to this agenda that? So anything else that you need to add to this agenda that we should be discussing, please give Lori or Jeff a call, and, uh, we'll see if we can get those added. Okay, we come to the end of our meeting, and more importantly, we come to an end of a, a tenure for our superintendent. She made me promise that we wouldn't discuss it.
I promise. Did the teary crying thing.
But I lied. So, you know, you just don't get a person who goes through the system like Ms. Geese has gone through the system from, no, I think you started in Cassin, if I'm not mistaken. And then since that, you walk right through our system and.
South Washington in there, too, yeah.
I remember when we, uh, when we hired you, it was in the post bulletin, and then somebody, somebody had, uh, responded, congratulations for Cannon Falls to seeking through their own, which was not done, which still isn't done very often, so. Beth, I think it's incumbent on all of us to thank you for your years of service here. I know you've had two or three, uh, get togethers with other entities, your staff, outside Rotary Group, I think. But we'd be remiss if we didn't say congratulations to you for, for the new opportunity in St. Francis and for being a part of our lives for so long.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It has been, you know, just remarkable to be somewhere for eighteen years and be with my kids all the way through. It's just, you know, a dream come true. Um, actually, Jeff and I can say that it's becoming more common to see people coming through systems, because you know what you're getting. And I think, um, you kind of knew what you were getting, and whether you liked it or not, you kind of knew it, and there's some good and some bad with that. But, um, mostly, and I wrote a letter, the editor, you'll see this week, I just really thank this community, because something you have to look forward to is they just say yes whenever you need something. I look at the people here that are our teachers, I mean, they say yes repeatedly when we need something. You know, um, every time we've needed an intern or a mentor or something, they find it for us, you know? Anytime I've gone out for a grant, someone even starts to try to tell me no. I'm like, oh, no, well, we've got this, and, you know? My administrative team, I'd put them up against anybody. So, um, you know, I, yes, it's been great and hard and all of those things, but if I wasn't surrounded by these people, um, you know, Laura and I were hired the same year and same teaching, and, you know, I look at Lori Turner, and she's down in my classroom, and it's kind of funny when your books get opened and it says Ms. Geese inside, and I remember that from when I taught fourth grade or something like that. So, um, I think the biggest compliments go to this town. I mean, you made it easy for eighteen years to be in a place where people really accepted my crazy ideas, and we can do this, and an administrative staff that doesn't leave me every year. I mean, so many superintendents, right, Jeff? They, they go through this cycle where a district like this would be considered a stepping stone. We have teachers making their career here, we have our administrators making their career here. You know, I just, I think it's a lot to say about what we're doing in this district. So keep up the good work and, you know, just do the right thing for kids, and you will be an awesome board. If you start making decisions about you or something specific, you, you just won't make good decisions. Make it what's right for kids, and you will be an awesome, awesome board like you are. So keep up the good work.
You will be best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the last bit is a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Anna. Anna, you can have that from now on, because it always seems to be tough. Rob, I think, did it for years.
Everybody just wants to stay, I guess.
Yeah, we could sit here for hours. And the second.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second for adjournment. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished.